You're watching Open Agenda. Here's our host, Joe White.
Welcome to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. In this episode, we're going to take some time to discuss the financial audit from 24 and how it relates to the fiscal year 26 budget that is actually starting now. In order to do that, I brought in a couple guests, Mr. Bob Taylor, former county council attorney from Wyomaca County, Dr. Joe Venosa. Thanks for coming in, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hello.
So, look, we're getting a lot of information at one time. And sometimes when you get a lot of information, it's hard to kind of parse through all the minutia. The bottom line is, over the next 60 days, the county executive who just did submit the financial audit for 26, and that covers July 1st, '25, all the way to June 30th of '26, that just got turned in, the proposal, over the next 60 days, we're going to have several hearings, budget hearings, also some other open work sessions. So let's go through this. I mean, really, we need to start by really wrapping up the financial audit from 24, which we just did get that information two weeks ago. So Bob, I mean, give us some of the highlights. I mean, you've gone through-
Yeah, it's about 160 pages long. I haven't read all of them, but I'm used to the format for these. I've looked at the financial statements for many years, and I can kind of go and get some quick numbers out of it. Here's a brief overview. For revenue, the budget, final budget for that year was $183 million and change. It came in in new revenue at $209 million. Now, that's about a $26 million surplus, if you want to call it that. On the expenditure side, the final budget called for $171 million and change in expenses. They only expended $155 and a half million. So that's another $16 million surplus. To put those together, that's over $42 million of surplus.
Okay.
Most businesses, if they spend $155 million and their profit's $42 million, they're going to feel pretty good.
They're pretty happy, yeah.
It's not quite that good, though. It was a very, it was a good year-
Yeah.
But maybe not quite as very good as makes it look that way. And that's because-
So let's talk about what?
Well, one of the main reasons, just in looking at overview, is $30 million came out of the general fund that's not listed as expenditure. Most of that was from the prior year surplus.
Okay.
We have an existing surplus.
Yeah.
It's about 85 million.
Okay.
And some of that goes into the budget, and then it gets paid out if you have more revenue than you've expected. So you take out about 30 million. If you take it off of that 42 million, you have about $11 million left. And if you look at the, in the financial statement, if you look at the balance sheet for the general fund, we're only talking now about the general fund. So that went up last year by about 23 million. But if you take out, if you adjust for that use of prior year revenue, you really have about $10 and a half million, and that was the amount that the unassigned, that your real, true savings account went up. Now, just so everybody knows, there's also a rainy day fund. That's not included in the unassigned balance. That's, I think, between $5 and $10 million. Believe it or not, the financial statement does not say how much the rainy day fund is. I don't know why that is, but I mean, most people, I think, would want to know.
I would, I would want to know, not because we hope to spend it, but just so you make sure that it's still there, right?
Yeah. So realistically, June 30th of '24, a little over a year, year and a half ago roughly, we had about 85 million unassigned and another five or so in the rainy day fund, and perhaps some others, because I don't know how they categorize everything in the general fund. I'd have to have more detailed information. But I think it's fair to say there's at least $90 million when you include the rainy day fund back then.
Now, why do you think the revenues were so much higher for fiscal year '24 than what was budgeted? I mean, there's three major categories, right?
That's, that's interesting.
Okay.
Just to get into the weeds on that, the income tax revenue was $77 million and change. That's about $6 and a half, $7 million more than it was the year before.
But also about $13 million more than they budgeted, right?
Exactly. It's about $13 million more than they budgeted, because for some reason, they budgeted the amount of revenue they thought they would get at what was less than what was collected the year before.
And really, almost what was less than the year before that?
That, that's right.
I mean, why would you, I mean, do you have any-
I can't, I can't answer that question. It's above my pay grade. But anyway, that's a major factor. Now, there are a couple others. One is the investment earnings were way up. Interest rates went up. So they had, they had only budgeted that at, I think, $4,800, $4,800,000. That came in at $10,000.2. So that was about a $5 and a half million surplus.
And that's from the state of Maryland, their municipal fund that we've always been a part of, went up 2% just because interest rates were higher.
Yeah, and interest rates were higher than they had been.
It wasn't anything that anybody necessarily did at this point.
Yeah, I mean, it's a tremendous increase. Just to give you a rough overview, in FY21, three years ago before this, the total investment earnings were less than $100,000.
Wow. Interest rates were low.
Now, it was 10.2. That's a hundred-fold increase.
Yeah. There's more money in the account-
Two orders of magnitude.
And the interest rates are higher.
Yeah, higher. So that was good. The other big jump was in the intergovernmental, it's classified as, that's really grants from the state primarily government.
And some of that was COVID money, still actually being realized, right?
And state and federal.
Yeah.
And the federal part, of course, was COVID.
Yeah. And they did explain that that, that's always been there, but they can't realize it on the balance sheet until it's spent, and it wasn't spent until fiscal year '24.
Well, and not only that, I think most of that COVID money had a deadline of the end of the year '24, when it had to either be spent or committed.
Yeah.
So that, that money is going away. I'm not sure that it's totally gone away.
We can't count on that anymore.
Well, we can count maybe on a small part of it. This, this we have to get into the weeds on, but certainly not anywhere close to the $12 million that we got.
On the flip side, you mentioned earlier that there was a lot less expenses. What were the major areas that they didn't spend the money on?
In that instance, most of the underspending was the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
That was about $2 million less than budgeted.
Okay.
I don't know all the answers. I know part of it was because we didn't have a department head.
Yeah.
And that's part of it, but I don't know. This should be looked at.
No, it was interesting, because just, just at the April 15th meeting, the public works, that has a department head now, they just came before the county council and said, "Look, we need $2.3 million. We need it today so that we can remove the old spoils out of the Sharps Point facility for the dredging."
Maybe, maybe, yeah. Maybe to put the expenditure in broader overview, though, it was about, it was about $155 million. That was about five, a little over $5 million more than the prior year. Now, most of the overage of that $5 million and plus was the sheriff, the fire department, or fire services, I should say, not department, and all other departments of the county government.
Okay.
Now, in other words, excluding education, corrections, sheriff, fire, blah, blah, blah. So that's, that's where the $5 million of extra spending came from. The biggest decrease by far was the public works. That was $2 million. So that's a rough overview of it. But the long and short of it is, the $155 million that was spent was much less than the $171 million that was budgeted. All, all the departments look like they're somewhat overbudgeted. Just look like it. I can't say without looking item by item, but you get the feel when you look at that much of a difference.
So Joe, you've been very vocal about the need to fund the Board of Education, maintenance of effort, plus the additional that they've asked.
Not only that, I think the maintenance of effort itself is, as I think you've indicated too, itself is pretty paltry compared to other counties.
Well, you know, and I don't, I don't want to get into the debate about other counties because it comes to state.
Short answer, yes.
Okay. Well, all right, a month ago, 30 short days ago-
Yeah.
The county executives having hearings. Now, this is before the financial audit of '24-
Sure.
Which came out four months late.
Right. But ostensibly, they knew this.
They had to have known this.
They had to have known this, yeah.
Unless the, the numbers were just nonexistent to them, which is scary in itself.
Sure.
We're having a conversation just 30 days ago about raising taxes.
Right.
So maybe it is time to look at the revenue cap, and is it the best policy? Is it the best thing?
And now here we stand, and Bob discussing anywhere from $10, $10 and a half million to $42 million discrepancy in what was budgeted and what was brought in.
Yeah.
Are you glad your taxes aren't coming up?
I am, but I'm also worried about why it was framed in that way to begin with.
Yeah. Is there, is there an ulterior motive? Is there, ultimately, it's just about money?
Well, it's, it's always about money with certain local officials, but I know that might surprise some of you, but ultimately, this was about framing a political issue for the future, because ultimately, it's the goal of the county executive and certain members of the business community, and some people on the council, or maybe on the council, that want to get rid of the revenue cap. And they tend to not look at what we have and use it, rather than say, "Well, we really need to get rid of it so that we have it." And again, I'm a big supporter of public education. I think it does need to be drastically increased for a lot of things, although not necessarily some of the things that the blueprint is calling for. But nevertheless, I'm a big champion of it, always will be. But that, those two things are mutually exclusive.
Yeah. They're not, they're not necessarily attached at the hip.
Not at all.
And just as Bob pointed out a few minutes ago, $11 and a half million in actual surplus from fiscal year '24 that's going to roll up into '25, which we're in '25 now. And having the revenue cap is keeping $9 million in the local private sector.
That is one of the biggest points of the revenue cap. It put $9 million in our county residents' pockets.
For people to spend on groceries and, you know, providing for their children.
Well, God, God knows the cost of those things are going to go up anyway, with what we're saying. So I think, you know, again, it's probably knowing that, again, let's assume these numbers are correct and that they hold, I think that gives us all the more reason. I mean, if you want a great defense of why we should keep the revenue cap-
Bob, what other thoughts do you have on the financial audit that just came out a couple weeks ago? I mean, is there any other takeaways that you have?
Now, there is one thing, though. There is a department that was way over.
Okay.
That was the law department.
Of course.
That was up by about 25% over what was budgeted.
And how much is that?
A hundred and some thousand.
Okay. Well, is that maybe the county executive?
I'm almost certain that was the lawsuit.
To be fair, they're getting a lot of extra work these days, so it would seem.
Most of the trial in the circuit court was in fiscal year '24.
Okay.
The appeal was this year in Annapolis.
Okay.
So it's split between the two years.
And you're talking about the Matt Lightzel confirmation-
Correct, yeah.
And the amount of money that the executives spent to sue us, to sue ourselves.
Sue the council, yeah.
Now, the, for the regular person out there who does not want to get line item by line item, and most people don't, the three main takeaways were that there were, there was revenues that were underestimated, expenses that were overestimated, and then there also was some government grant money that still flowed through for '24. Really, ultimately, what we want to get at is, what do folks need to know for this spring? Because the springtime, this next 60 days is when we're going to decide our budget for the next year.
Well, okay, I would look at it two ways. First of all, they need to get pro forma information on this year, FY25. The county should have that, and you can compare your receipts and your expenses to what they were this time a year ago.
You mean a trend?
Yeah, you can get, you can get a pretty, you know, you've been in business. It follows.
In the business world, cash flow and trends are huge.
And you can see those by comparative data.
It almost sounds like you're talking about a quarterly report.
Yeah, or monthly.
If we were a $200 million private entity-
Right.
We would have quarterly reports, wouldn't we?
Well, and I will say something.
Would you want one?
In this year's budget, there's the very last page, and this is the first time they've put it in the proposed budget, is kind of a reconciliation of what's going to happen to the general fund balance.
Well, I tell you what-
And that's, that's a good table to have. We can get into that.
Let's, let's take a break, and when we come back, let's, let's kind of tee up. Now, I think we're finally putting fiscal year '24 to bed. Thank goodness. It feels like we've, we've begged and asked for this now for four or five months. It's, we're moving beyond that, but we're jumping right into, unfortunately, since it was so late, we're jumping right into the next year.
And this is why it would be good to get the financial statement much earlier.
Yeah.
So you don't have it right on the back of your, of your next year's budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, stay with us. When we come back, we're going to start to set the table for the financial, or the fiscal year '26 budget, that those hearings are going to be in May and June this year. So stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. In this segment, we're going to spend some more time with Bob Taylor and Joe Venosa. We're going to start to really pick apart just the process and maybe some of the information you want to gather for the fiscal year '26 budget. So thank you, gentlemen, for sticking around in the studio.
Thank you.
So, Joe, I mean, we, you and I, the last two months, have covered the, the budget hearings, the public hearings. Even back in November, we covered the CIP, where our appointed delegate Barry Beecham wanted to know which of us were ready to-
Pay a little bit more in taxes.
Pay more in taxes with breaking the revenue cap.
Good evening, Barry Beecham, county resident. And as far as the, I guess, the elephant in the room here, everybody's talking about, you know, we need funds, and the funds are lack thereof. I'd say the elephant in the room is the tax cap. And I'm just curious, how many people here would be willing to have their taxes, their property taxes raised?
To support any property?
To support any property, because, because, and that's, that's really what we need to really look at. And, you know, for me to say, hey, I'm in favor, you know, of a tax increase, I'm really, no one wants to hear that. But the problem is that we don't have enough money to fund these-
As Bob has said, we're finding that we're under budgeted.
Seems like it's working pretty well.
It seems like it's going okay, and maybe, maybe even we need to do a better job budgeting. I mean, it's been a couple years of underestimating and, you know, how do we know if we're doing the right thing if we don't know where we're at?
Yep.
What's the most important aspect you hope to get out of the next, say, two, two council meetings when we're having these budget hearings?
Well, I'd like to get a sense of what the priorities, obviously, of the executive's office are, because that, like it or not, that does drive a lot of the narrative and a lot of the vision of the county. And I would also like to get a good sense as to, ultimately, you know, from my perspective, what kinds of resources are we investing in that help the county's quality of life and growth, but don't put us on a track where we're depleting resources down the road with things that aren't sustainable.
Okay. So Bob, I mean, kind of same question to you. You're, you're very educated in this process. What would, what do you expect? What questions do you think the council will be asking, and what should maybe the public be asking?
Well, first thing, I think it would be good to point out, we got a couple of good surprises in this coming budget.
Okay.
For, one is, we get about $3 million more for our disparity grant.
Okay.
That apparently was a last-minute deal in Annapolis.
We thought it was going to be flat, which was, which was lower than the-
Well, there were fears that it would be gone.
Well, yeah, but I think that was-
Maybe unfounded, but yeah, there was.
Yeah. But in any event, that's going to be up about $3 million.
Okay.
And we also found that we do not have to forward fund the Fruitland school.
At least for fiscal year '26.
Yeah, that's right.
It still might come up in '27.
It could come up, but there's about a $5 million difference there.
Now, how does that happen? Can you explain that to Joe Public?
I wish I could.
Actually, so-
My, my short answer is, this is Maryland.
Well, Director of Finance Pam Olent, at the, at the April 15th meeting, she gave her explanation.
Okay.
Okay? And basically, what I think she's saying is, one, the state of Maryland has, is releasing more of the funds in fiscal year '26 than they initially told the county?
I see.
At one point, it was $5 million only out of the $26 million they were supposed to do. Now it's 12.
Okay.
And because of the construction timeline, they won't be quote-unquote "out of money" during the process of construction while we're still in fiscal year '26. The school won't be completed until fiscal year '27. There was always going to be a fund there. The, the key there for the public to know is, if we end up having to bond that, those funds, for whatever reasons, maybe it's the state's fault, but we have to bond them, even when they reimburse us, they will not reimburse us for the interest that we lose. And once we bond it, it's 20 years. You can't pay it off early. So it's, it's really good news, actually, that we can kick that can at least one more year, but we should plan for it, right?
Reconciliation, that's on the last page of the budget. But there, they list what is PAGO for FY26. PAGO is a slang term for money that you take out of your general fund to pay for capital work.
Okay. So you didn't borrow it?
Yeah.
And, you know, you gave me, off camera, you gave me a great example, right? Talking about buying a piece of property.
Yeah, I mean, I bought a lot one time next to my house.
Okay.
As it turned out, I had the money to pay the full price. I didn't have to go borrow.
For at least the land?
Yeah, yeah. I probably could have gotten a mortgage, but I decided not to.
Okay.
So that's the difference. PAGO is taking it out of your pocket.
It's like savings that you're using on a project that if you didn't have the money, you would have to go borrow the money.
Right, yeah. It's a good way to look at it, yeah. The, so anyway, it's listing $16 million in PAGO. Now, in the initial capital improvement plan that was turned in in December, the PAGO was only $9.6 million. So that is a pretty significant difference. That's about a $7 million increase.
And this is off of the county executive CIP plan that she submitted.
Well, it's in the, in the proposed budget, yes. Hasn't been adopted yet by the council, won't be in full approval.
And even the initial one wasn't adopted by the council.
No, that's right. It's still pending.
So it only changed on the executive's plan.
So at the very, at the very least, what has been proposed in the CIP needs to be revised-
Yeah.
Because it doesn't agree.
And on the PAGO, on the capital projects that she has proposed coming out of PAGO, there's 28 different projects.
Well, there's, there's a bunch of them, and many of them are fairly small amounts. But the thing that jumped out at me, and you may remember, at the council, council meeting on Tuesday, there was discussion about dredging.
Yes.
And what we need to do, and particularly the Sharps Point project. That was in the original CIP at, I think it was $4.1 million.
Okay.
That's now $7 and a half million.
Okay.
So that's gone up. The others may have changed, too. I haven't gone through every item.
There's one other item on there that I'd like more answers to, and I'm not sure if the county council had the wrong information, or, but, but Director of Finance Pam Olent said she would get more information. There's only $1.2 million in that Sharps Point fund to remove those spoils. They asked for and received $2.3 million, but the, none of the money in the last four years has been spent, and maybe even longer. So it's just odd to me that we've been budgeting to do this. One, the work hasn't been done over the years. And now, when we, it's, we're in an emergency situation, we're going to, we're going to spend $2.3 million out of the savings account, as you say, and yet, the $1.2 million's going to just sit there.
That's the way it sounded on Tuesday, that, for example, the seven and a half-
Doesn't seem like a very conservative thing to do to me.
Well, the only thing, I think there was some discussion of why they needed to keep it, and I can't speak to the merits of that, because I'm not technically inclined that way.
I plan on asking more questions about that.
But, but anyway, the, the long and the short of it is, the $16 million that's now PAGO is much more than what the original CIP was. It was just a few months ago it was turned in. So those are things that you want to look at.
So the public even should know, because this could be a paving project in your neighborhood. This could be, this could be a water tower in your town. This could be a lot of things. Or it could be some wasteful spending that we don't know yet. There's not been a lot of-
Well, you can look, you can look at the projects. I mean, none of them jump out to me as being wasteful, but I don't know. I mean, I'd have to look at more closely. But, and the dredging needs to be done, I mean, from an economic standpoint.
Oh, I would agree there.
The interesting thing about it is, to me, on the dredging, and why we've just gotten into this, is why it's taken so long.
I agree.
We actually, apparently, they do the dredging of the river in three cycles.
Yeah.
Three portions, on a three-year rotation. But we missed the last rotation.
We've missed the last, really, two, they said. We haven't been dredged in seven years.
Right.
And I do want the folks out there in the Sharps Point neighborhood to understand something. The county council, this past Tuesday, at the request of the executive's office, agreed to fund $2.3 million to remove almost 400,000 cubic yards of material out of Sharps Point, 60,000, or 30,000 trucks, which means if a truck's got to go down your neighborhood and back out, that's 60,000 trucks. That's going to happen between now and October. So about 180 days, divide that into 60,000 trips, and that's what's coming to a neighborhood near you. And this is what happens when one county government doesn't spend the money adequately over time, and then also, once again, doesn't explain to a neighborhood, "Hey, this is what's coming down." I mean, do we have to do it? Yes. But if you live down Candom Avenue, Riverside Drive-
I'm pretty close to it.
Yeah. Hey, don't let your kid play outside and-
Who says the executive never gave me anything?
Well, you didn't get noticed, that's for sure.
That's true.
But I think that for the public, you know, you're not just talking raises. They talked about there's going to be a 3% cost of living, or 2% cost of living adjustment and a 3% step up for all county employees as an average. I think a lot of us agree that probably a 5% increase is probably barely keeping up with inflation. But again, if you have a problem with this in July, it's not going to do any good. You know, you've got to be there in the, in the May and the early June meetings, correct?
And just might, you might also want to relate that salary increase to the Board of Ed, because that doesn't, their salaries come out of their budget. But the overage that they've asked for above maintenance of effort, it's a total of about 8%. Now, 3% of that is based on additional enrollment.
Yeah.
The enrollment's gone up, so-
They have to do that.
The MOE goes up by 3%. The other, the other 5% is, 3% of it is for inflation, because MOE does not reflect inflation.
No.
It's just a level amount per, per student.
Right.
And then the other 2% is for special projects.
And, you know, one, one aspect that hasn't been decided, even if the county council does agree for the, the extra spending, is whether or not it's going to be a one-time thing, which means that technically, they're, they don't have to do it again next year.
Yeah.
Or if they do make it permanent, the MOE, the maintenance of effort, does slide up and stay there at that point. So either one of you, is there a burning question that, that you feel like, before the budget gets approved in mid-June, that needs to be answered? I have one, but-
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to know how we're going to look at this for 2020, 27. Are we going to continue to underestimate income? Are we going to still have public hearings where the executive stands up with the finance director and says, "We can't count on, on income tax revenue, even though the trends say much differently"? And she even said at the April 15th meeting, "That we're always 18 months in arrears anyway, so we have an idea."
Well, and related to that, too, is like, it seems like because we have short-term good news on the budget, that that justifies the delay on the information that we're getting.
Yeah.
You know, I think like, I think a lot of the, the response that someone in the administration would say is, "Oh, yeah, we know it's late, but look how good it is." Well, okay, but what if we were $5 million below where we need it to be? What if we didn't have a surplus?
What if we look like Annapolis?
Again, it's always, look, it's going to rain. The question is, is it going to rain tomorrow and two weeks, you know?
How about you, Bob?
Well, what I'd like to see is, I'd like to see the council spend a lot more time than they normally do when they have their work sessions on the budget. They bring in people from the departments, and they really need to get into the weeds, and not just accept everything on face value.
Maybe, maybe, you know, and this is one thing I would side with, with Director of Finance Pam Olent. She, she brought up submitting the questions in advance of the work session so that she could have the answers. And I, I do think that that's a valid point. You know, I've worked with many boards in my, various roles in my career, and nothing's worse than coming up and having what would be seemingly an easy answer to discern, but you'd need to be in front of your, your records just to get the answer, and then it's like somebody wants to put you on the spot. All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So in our final segment today, we're going to invite in Joe Scaffino from the city of Salisbury. And we want to take some time to really talk about Board of Ethics, their representation, and the role of not just city government, but also county government, and also as it pertains to planning and zoning. These are all very hot topics in our, in both the city with density and the county with biodiesel refineries. So when we come back, Dr. Venosa and I will sit down with him and-
You're going to have two handsome Joes, both from Staten Island.
Well, how about three handsome Joes?
Okay, but, all right.
And one of them's from the Eastern Shore of Maryland.
Wouldn't Meatloaf sing, "Two Out of Three Ain't Bad"?
Oh, no. I think one out of three is pretty good. So stay with us. We'll be right back. Welcome back to Open Agenda. I'm your host, Joe White. Wanted to take some time to, to tie in the city government and the county government, because they're in the process of separating their planning and zoning. In order to talk about some of the, the works in that, in that area, and maybe even some of the, the issues we should make sure are addressed, I brought in a special guest, Joe Scaffino. Say it right, Joe.
Yes.
All right, from Salisbury. And Dr. Venosa, still here with us. Thank you.
Both Staten Island guys.
Yeah.
That's right.
Hey! So you got the three Joes, you know, for whatever that's worth. So, Joe, you're resident of Salisbury.
Yes.
You have experience living in New York and Pennsylvania. You've seen lots of different government techniques. You've even been a council person before, right?
Yeah, eight years.
Yeah, and vice president, too?
Vice president for three of them, yep.
You've been very active with the Salisbury city government, and I wanted to get a sense for some of the, you know, you've raised a lot of awareness on social media about some concerns, and we are going through the process right now, separating planning and zoning, county and city, which have been combined for almost 20 years. You know, what are some of the things you think that the folks out there need to make sure they understand before this happens later this summer?
Well, based on my experience, in Pennsylvania, I was actually the council liaison to the Planning Commission, and we're going to need five to seven volunteers for the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission. And in this day and age, it's pretty difficult to get volunteers. There's a lot of, a lot of time involved. For example, the Central Business District zoning issue, that took a lot of hours, a lot of time, that people may not be willing to give up. My recommendation would be that there should be some kind of compensation for these Planning Commission people that we're going to put in place in Salisbury.
And you say that, and that's to make sure also, too, that we're getting people who are representative of the whole community and not someone just with special interests who maybe isn't making a stipend but has some other axe to grind, you know?
Absolutely.
Who has a closed agenda as opposed to an open one.
And again, the Planning and Zoning Commission members, they're constrained by the law. They can't go rogue.
Okay.
So that's a safeguard in place.
So, Joe, I mean, you and I, we've covered the current Planning and Zoning Commission. In fact, we were just talking in a recent episode about some of the comments directed from folks from the Greater Salisbury Commission, or the Greater Salisbury Committee.
Pretty much.
One of those Freudian slips, I guess. But, you know, what's your concern with the, you know, really keeping the ethics on the up and up when we're doing the separation for both the county and the city?
Well, there's two things. I think, one, just in principle, it should probably be a situation where the county system and the city system mirror each other as much as possible. Obviously, there's some differences, but one of the things that I was concerned about that we've talked about in the community over the last few days was the proposal of the county executive regarding this new system for the county planning and zoning would have given her office basically exclusive power to hire and remove commission members.
Well, now, you say that, now, the county council still has a lot of say in how this is going to get set up, and I'm sure they're not going to allow that.
Correct. I believe they will be the necessary check and balance, but that was the proposal that was emanating from the executive's office. So, I'm sorry.
Well, let's look down one other rabbit hole there.
Sure.
Let's talk about the ethics side of this, okay? So we just saw, and we're talking about county for a second, the county council just appointed independent, you know, legal counsel for the Board of Ethics.
Yes.
Planning and zoning really deals with that.
Exactly.
So, Joe, I want to ask you, like, how does that, you know, as you're seeing this process unfold, and they're going to unwind these two committees, they're not shutting either one of them down, but they're separating them, how does that make you, how does that make you feel as far as on the ethics side of things?
Well, I think it's a good idea, first of all, to separate the county and the city.
Okay.
All right, that in itself is good. Ethically, we have ethics commissions. There's a county one, and there's a city one. And I had done some research into this issue when I learned that the county was separating the solicitor, so instead of using the county solicitor also for the ethics commission, which is a blatant conflict of interest, in my opinion.
Yeah, I would agree.
Okay. When I saw that, I decided to look into the issue a little deeper, and I discovered Salisbury has the same issue.
Okay.
I looked at surrounding counties, and it appears to be a common occurrence throughout Maryland, where municipality or county solicitor also is the solicitor of the ethics commission. And it strikes me as, as a protection racket for the elected officials.
Right.
So what was, what you're saying, and what was factual about the county government up until just a couple of months ago, was that the same representative who's representing, say, the city council, or in the county's case, the county council, the county as a whole, was also the representative, legal representative for the Ethics Board.
Correct.
So if he ran into an ethics issues with the planning and zoning, these are new people.
Right.
The same person who's representing that entity also represents the Ethics Commission.
As it's set up right now, yes.
Only in the city now, because the county is...
Correct, correct.
So, Joe, you know, really, that's a lot to swallow, right? So what is it, we're asking folks out there to gain a little knowledge of?
Well, essentially, and I think, and this applies to both the county and the city, right, is that one of the, one of the real red flags with not having a situation where there's a separation is, it leaves whoever the attorney is, who is working for the municipality or the county, in a real position where there's a massive, as you said, a massive conflict of interest, and it really stifles the ability, or at least it could, of citizens to get a fair hearing if there are clear political and even economic actors who are pushing a particular agenda. And so, you know, hypothetically, right, if, because, let's take this issue and let's apply it just to the city, right? Let's take this issue that is now being devolved, and let's say that we're going to have a situation where, but let's say you had an issue that you brought to the attention of the commission, and it involved the mayor. How would this current process look in terms of possible concerns?
Well, what's interesting is that the whole process is confidential, so the public doesn't even, wouldn't even be aware of it, all right? But the person who brings the complaint, they, as a member of the public, they may not feel they're getting a good shake, because the solicitor for the mayor is also the solicitor for the Ethics Commission.
Right.
So that's a conflict of interest right there. And it also puts that solicitor in a very compromised position.
Right.
Because I was either hired by, but I definitely work for...
Right.
The mayor and the council, and now I got to agree with a recommendation that they violate, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you could make the argument that their own job security could be on the line.
Exactly.
And this is why, when the Ethics Commission was reformed for the county by the county council, you know, they wanted to create a separation, because the solicitor essentially serves at the discretion of the executive now, which means, oh, if I don't agree with what the madam executive wants, I could be out of a job or I could be removed.
Well, and it was interesting, because the county executive vetoed that legislation at first.
Of course, yeah, sure, sure.
Went back to the county council, and it passed six to one.
No, seven.
Seven to zero.
Seven, zero, thank you, Councilman, win, yeah.
But, Joe Schaffino, you're, we're talking about city politics, and again, this isn't about Randy Taylor.
Right.
It could be about any of the city council, it could be about the council president.
Absolutely.
It could be about any of them.
Absolutely.
So right now, you're saying, in the city council government, mayor, city council president, the other four council members, if you have an ethics complaint, that complaint is going to be heard not publicly and by the same legal representative that represents the city and hired that representative as a legal counsel, right?
Exactly. And another issue that the public doesn't know, the Ethics Commission, they could be members of an ethic commission that are personal friends with the mayor or someone on council.
This is...
We don't know that.
This has been a recurring concern. I can say, just being, you know, a local citizen and having moved in these circles, there's some been longstanding concerns that certain members of the Ethics Commission have very close relationships to other elected officials. In fact, that's often how they are asked to serve.
Well, so we'll circle this back to the planning and zoning, because that's really where we started, right?
Exactly.
So if we have this problem with the Ethics Commission now, now, we feel like we've solved it in the county, at least taking a step forward.
Yes, definitely.
Still have work to do in the city, at least by our opinion.
Yeah.
But if we separate the planning and zoning, and all we end up doing is setting up that commission in the same way the Ethics Commission is set up, do we end up with the same conflict of interest, correct?
Potentially, yes.
We're doubling down on it.
So, and, you know, we've been very critical of the Greater Salisbury Committees. It seems like they already know what the plan is.
Yeah.
Before the plan, you know, when we covered the planning and zoning, the text amendment back in November.
Yeah.
Chip DeShiel, who's the, who's the president, the chair of planning and zoning, they already had a script out, it was hours and hours of public testimony, followed by a scripted version of...
A preset response and vote, yeah.
And no discussion.
No, no, and actually...
And it got passed, doubling the density.
And Councilman Holloway even spoke to this issue at the last county council meeting, where he basically said, you know, you have, you know, at least within the context of the Greater Salisbury Committee, which, you know, has, I believe, over 100 paying dues members, but you really have four or five people that are actually running it with a particular sort of angling agenda. And if you have them or any group that has that kind of influence on these commissions, you're really putting the public interest on the back burner.
All right, so there's one other side of this public interest I want to delve into. So let's take this Randy Taylor example we're going with, and we're picking on him because we don't have a problem with him.
Right.
So let's just say, Joe here, this Joe, has a beef with Randy Taylor. He's filed an ethics complaint. He can't, he can't speak to it, right?
Right.
It's heard by the same legal representative that works for the mayor or the city council president or the county, or the city council. It gets turned down. What is your options at that point?
Your option is to either just drop it, or you can appeal it to Circuit Court.
Okay.
Now, if you appeal it to the Circuit Court, the law is kind of ambiguous. I believe at that point, the confidentiality becomes moot, because...
It's a legal proceeding.
Because the legal proceeding is a public record. So anybody can see that, and then they would see, you know, an appeal of the Ethics Commission, and, oh, what's that? So that cat would be out of the bag at that point.
But that's not free, right?
Well, that was my next point, right? Like, well, you know, John Q. Citizen here.
Yeah.
If they want to push it, they're going to have to pay out.